Roll call please Lisa.
Thank you.
Here.
And Eddie?
Here.
All right, Esther?
Here.
Please sit down.
Here.
Wilson, Nelson?
Here.
Letting more? Eliot here.
Here.
You mean, please move the petition first?
Yes, sir. Father, we just came before you tonight and we just want to thank you, Father, for all the blessings that you give us for living in the United States of America. All the many things that we take for granted. Lord, we just want to thank you for the authorities that are over us, Lord. Father, I just pray for them tonight that you would help our nation as a whole to be able to go back to the Constitution. Father, we thank you for tonight and I ask that you would just give us wisdom in making decisions for the town, that we would do it in a manner of reasonable wisdom and good for the whole. We thank you for that, which is safe.
Amen. Please, Mr. President.
...................................................................................................
Next slide, approval of minutes for April 9th.
Do you want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll second.
Motion by Lisa, seconded by Brad, to approve the minutes over April 9th. Any other questions or discussions? All in favor, say the same, aye.
Aye.
All votes, same sign?
Most passes.
Thank you.
Petitions, Republic, no input? Nobody? Changes to the dead of view, we've got a couple here.
Yeah, we have two items. We had a resolution 2013-03, if he's here to speak about that concerning that special event for us. Then we had an update to resolution 2013-02, and we can talk more about that when we get to the action.
Okay. Public hearing will go ahead, skip for right now. Any committee or board report? Supervising reports. Allen?
Should have handed this out to you earlier, but my colleagues.
That's fine.
Oh, the hover receives the micro screen to replace the unvintage equipment. Is online, has been online now for approximately the past three or four weeks. It's a close to four weeks. Been about 10 days that these equipment started discharge, and it's worked very well since then. As you can see, it's a much cleaner looking unit downstairs, it's much simpler, and it functions. To me, that's a big portion of that area. So, the other item is, you'll see with a little aluminum hatch open, that's an actual elevator that Don built, and Bill and Mike went ahead and produced so they could. The trash bags, it's downstairs, we can all re-sort the material up to that elevator rather than having to have it bag by bag, you know, with the needle may poke against you, or have this material, whatever. So now it's actually a rubber made trash can that we can actually get upstairs without even breaking your back, or that stuff gets fairly heavy, so. And right now, we were getting actually surprised that this unit discharges about 10 to 15 pounds of waste today. So, it's actually fairly good removal. We do have some getting used to it on, you know, just because it operates a little bit different, but it's very quiet, it's very smooth. Maintenance on it is now, comparatively, the old machine, we probably spend probably 20 minutes a day. This machine is probably 15 minutes a week, other than changing the bag. So it is quite a bit less labor intensive. So, we're very pleased with it. The installation went very well, and actually downstairs, it cleaned up that whole area. We had to replace a lot of aluminum grating down there, and you can see in the picture there's some aluminum grating down there. So, we still have a few minor items to touch up here and there, but for the most part, that piece of equipment and the elevator did the debris upstairs, it is complete. The wiring's done, and it controls her as well. We did budget $80,000 for that project, but so far, we are under that budget as well. So we don't have the final numbers in it, we're close to it, but I don't foresee a succeeding in that value.
How much you think you're going to save?
Well, we saved over $20,000 just by installing ourselves. But that wasn't included within the $80,000 budget, so I'd say probably about $5,000 to $10,000, it's a close to $5,000, somewhere in that area. But either way, we fell under budget, and that's always nice to see. Start with the irrigation system. It is up and online, but this was rather a trying year. We had numerous breakups upon startup for the system. I don't know if it was due to the cold weather that we had, I don't know, we had several meters that went to pump. We had a bulbous pipe that moved, shifted on us this year and actually sprung a leak, so we had to choke back on there, this and that, the tank side. And then we had a break right in the middle of shooting Stanley there by the Parks and Rec, making shit over there, so. Then Terrorist Street over there, public works did, and new repair over there as well. We also had to replace a couple of some check valves and additional apertures for that in the pump station that were wore out as well this spring. With the irrigation system, we did get another formal proposal from another engineering firm in regard to that grant that we were awarded from the Colorado Water Conservation Board. I believe that was $12,500 is what the grant award was for. And with that grant, we're going to be getting a, this is our second proposal, we're going to be getting a side-by-side view to see what we can get the most bang for our buck out of this thing, and comparative between the two, and we'll be coming before the council to discuss that in further detail, probably within the next month. I would probably set direction to say. Or even your future.
I see.
That was a run out.
I think it crossed, eh?
And that's just on the raw water. That's just on the raw water system, so. And we'll be looking at more or less doing hydrology study on what are the capabilities of the system, if we don't fully know what it can do, what it can fully produce, so. Any questions regarding that? In response, I should have read that this was a hover. The crew had to spend, actually several days, probably a week and a half down at the wastewater plant to clean up, since we were bypassing that during the construction time. We didn't have any significant failures, but the amount of debris that was left after six days, 45 days of bypassing, that micro screen was barely attached. We do have some vector issues we might have this summer, just due to the flow season, but we apologize for any odors or whatever else might come from it, but that's likely where it's going to stem from, so. The crew also has been working on ramping up facilities, getting ready for the summer run. We've been seasonally now going around through the water facilities, and we speed them up and slow them down. We go around our pump stations, and as it gets warmer, we might increase the capacity of this pump, increase the capacity of the pump in the fall. So the crew's went around and made some adjustments with that as well. They have a few more to do, but we're nearly complete with that, so for the most part, we're ready for a good summer. Last week, at the intersection of Ridge Road and Middle Street, we had a sanitary sewer overflow. We found a significant rip off that appeared to be cleaned out of someone's residential line that got hung up on our repair on our silver line at one point in time, which caused a backup inside the manhole. No work from Rockhampton, actually none, and we were able to go in there and get the block beat out, but we are going to have to dig up where that sewer maintenance added to our repair.
You said Ridge Road, where?
Uh, Ridge Road in Mesa Drive.
And Mesa Drive.
In Mesa Drive, I'm sorry. And we're looking at probably maybe a four or five foot pad that's going to be put inside there. So, not sure how that damage once upon a time, but the repair that is in there is failing, so we'll get it remedied. Lastly, Bill, Don, and Mike, within the next couple of weeks, actually Mike is leaving, he left today, he's on his way to Denver right now to take his wastewater treatment A and his Collection One license, for the certifications. Don is scheduled to go in at the end of this month to Rickle, to take his water treatment A, and Bill is scheduled to take his C. All three operators have been diligently, whenever they have a spare 10 minutes, five minutes, 30 minutes, whatever, I thought them, today I went in there and they've got a little pie chart that they're working on, where they've got their own little inner study group. I was proctoring them for quite some time, but then they kind of just started doing this on their own, which I kind of encourage, and it's actually helping them. Again, it improves camaraderie within the department as well, and they can kind of learn to study like that, little study group. So, I'm hoping I can come back with good news, but I know all three are very excited, they're all pretty little nervous, but we've got three people that are really trying to make a, make a, a good advancement for themselves. So, I applaud all their efforts, and it makes me smile when I see them working, talking about shop like that, and it's quizzing, so, amazing thing. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you, Tom. Thanks.
I quiz one of your operators today.
Did you? Did you do the right answer?
Almost.
C or 12? C is the answer, or 12?
You really?
Yeah.
In fact, you have this DWR credit report that's a report the state put together based on our submission for the $1.000, the $1.5 million loan, and they are tentatively saying that they're going to remit our application to the committee. These people are really difficult to say that they'd like to loan, and I think that would be so difficult to borrow money in such as to get a grant, but I found that this is actually more difficult than paying a grant in the state, so. But we have a few revisions to this application. Did deal with the account today, the state account, and they're going to make some changes to that, so we'll see how that affects the application, but overall, I can remit it at this point. We should know June when the committee meets what the final answer is on the funding. They're having trouble because we are pursuing so many avenues of revenue sources. We're going after a grant for the same project for phase two, we're also pursuing that fellow loan, the loan that they, they also know that we receive direct distribution, and we're going to apply to this project, and we keep telling them that none of these sources are guaranteed, we have to pursue all these avenues, and so today, you were saying, I understand what you're doing, but we'd like to kind of firm up what you think the revenue's going to look like, and, you know, sort of get you to stay a stab at it, anyway.
Can I ask you what DWR stands for?
Oh, I'm sorry, Grand Team water revolving fund.
I was trying to think of a lot of things, but it just.
Good question.
My mother told me no questions stupid.
Snow White and Seven of the Wars.
I sent a email back to somebody the other day, and somebody was like, you know what, I don't have any interest, but I'll put that ad pretty impressive.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Also, in your package, you received the Chamber of Commerce sponsoring the public meeting by Enid at Willschuk. They were going to come in and talk about the project, it's close to Canada.
Is this U. A. and Partners?
Pardon?
Is this U. A. and Partners in your address? Do you want to make a statement?
The actual name of the company is American, I think that's their, their Estonian.
So they'll be here on Thursday if we need anything to break through or move, so whatever they do.
Is it going to be here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We could have went over and toured your stuff, but you didn't pay to go with it. So this is it?
Yeah, just don't even look at their facilities.
Is this their facility in Sony?
I think.
Is this photograph, or is this an orange? They can reset things with the computer anymore, I don't know if it was an actual.
You don't work out of there, Bill, the south of Atlanta?
I know where the building is, I know where all those are.
I think mom would never have said.
They must have gone here first, probably, initially they were calling.
Yeah, they recently came in about 100, some shop, several partners on there before.
Yeah, it was U. A. and Partners.
Yeah.
I just don't, I think we need the insider information, but I am.
Is this the table? Is this on the old UA UV Walsh background? It looks like.
It's a little bit, it's in the neighborhood of that. It's right along Leamont Bench Road. You come up from, you go south of Elkin Lake, you continue up onto the flat, that's Leamont Bench Road. This facility will be, well, probably four miles out to cross the Duchenne River and thumbs out to Black Hill, it'll be on the east side. They've already gone up there and drilled the course amp to their tanks, checked their formations, they've already built facilities leading to that.
Is this just west Baxter Pass area?
Yes, there's some stuff out there. And.
Columbine Springs.
It depends on how much drill progress they can get. Newfield has proposed 3,000, and Anadarko, who's, who's gentleman, at this facility.
They're awful.
Provided they go with the drill progress, we're talking about 7,000 rocks.
Where is that road through to cost? Is that where?
It's just off of U. A. and, U. A. and, U. Travel Land. U. Travel Land's currently. These. Way front. What kind of is it, by U. Travel?
Well, we have, we accepted an offer on the lot in Dragon Wash subdivision, the 5,000 square foot lot, lot number 60, $79,000 was the offer, which was while online before we did line here, on the other mile sale, and that same subdivision, who sold the 75, 000 square foot lot to Penn Five, so. We require the owners to take care of all the closing costs on these transactions, so. Also, we have quite a requirement to do, and myself, whoever else gets involved, but we've been working with local contractor, looking at the possibility of another minor subdivision in three, four years, hopefully we can see that kick off in the next 60 days. Sagewood mitigation started over there in Billyane, and they have chained up both the lower levels, so that there's no entrance. They get a downstairs over there, and contractor right now is starting the mitigation, so. Looking at, I'm with July, the division, mitigation could be, hopefully 30 units available, something late July or early August, not Billyane. Also, that.
It's Billyane in Northland?
It's Northland.
Thank you.
Spoke with 10 members in the office today, having about the same thing. Talked a little bit about parks agreement, and county subdivision, position on that whole thing, and they do want to pursue transfer of the three parks sometime this year, and not so sure the trails at this point are that interested. Right now, taking on the responsibility of the trails like that, Trail to the Lake and Kennedy, of course, we've started new construction of the trail segment on Royer this year. They want me to work on the boundary lengths for East End Interest Park, they're basic Kennedy grant, if you look on the county's parcel map, the boundary lengths for East End Park include most of the museum block as well, and I'm not sure what the favorite name was in the past that caused that to happen, but it doesn't include all of the museum property, but it looks like it includes most of it, so. We're going to try and sort that out, get that over to. Any questions? I know we have a lot of stuff going on around town with the house projects and the streets projects, and the court hearing.
What's all digging going on with the color? That's still some of that fiber?
They have two projects up there, one is a waterline project, and the other one is a fiber optic cable that they're running to the new Verizon tower that they're going to put up on that south end of their property up there. Mark Tilson told me, Negas, sources, whoever they are, told him that we're going to 4G, but I.
I can't, Mark can get 3G, I can't hear the cell.
Oh, mine's terrible. I have to go outside to talk with the cell phone.
It's way worse than it is.
So when I talked to some of those folks at Verizon, they indicated that tower was going to shoot it, being left at Cathedral, and improve some of the connectivity down up on 39, but hopefully they'll improve the service overall.
I hope so. My wife said it's terrible.
That's not strata out there, is it? Tying to the fiber optic?
Strata's taking the fiber to the tower.
Are they, are they going to fix our roof? Have you talked to them about that?
Yes, and in fact, it came out, and in the process, we put an agreement together, they gave us some cash security in the event that they don't get that, areas repaired, but.
Are they supposed to have permits to do that?
Yeah, that was the company, but Paul said we showed up on there.
They left down without them.
Yeah, they left down three days later, so.
That's all I have. Anybody else have any other questions? We've got another five minutes. Under due diligence, item C, discussion action to approve 2013 charter register.
I'll make a motion to approve the charter register.
I'll second.
Motion by Brad, seconded by Bill, to approve the charter register. Any other discussion? All in favor, say the same, aye.
Aye.
All votes, same sign? Motion passes. We go ahead and D, Tom, with resolution 13-02 for Cable Vision?
Yes.
Discussion action to approve resolution 2013-02, Cable Vision's last charter transfer control for cable franchise, extended term of cable franchise.
Is this, we've got a new one up here?
This is the ones, yeah.
Okay. What was the change?
The changes are they included the main charter communications, which is the company's acquiring. The other change is that they also mentioned that they would commit to looking at possible broadband and greater next services, and doesn't, it doesn't permit them to, I mean, morally do that, but they did include it in the agreement that that's one of the things they would agree to look at.
Better than what we have, just, you know? Look at.
Overall, it's basically a transfer agreement similar to what we developed about three years ago present, going to Cable Vision, so.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2013-02.
I'll second.
Motion by Brad, seconded by Lynn, to pass resolution 2013-2, any further discussion and comments? All in favor, say the same, aye.
Aye.
All votes, same sign? Motion passes. Item E, discussion action to approve debt worth unlimited quote for new server supporting the SQL version required for Cessell software. Purchase price would be $10,829.57 for monthly lease for 901, 2.85, which would be 13 months for a total of $11,731.
What's the Cessell software name? Sorry, Cessell software. S K L software.
This was, this is not what you had.
Was it? Was it not?
It is, yeah. According to Lisa's communication with Cessell, that if they have a very, our server would not be able to accept it directly, and our IT providers regularly have to change out the server in order to keep things functioning here.
Basically, it's something we need to do, we decide how we want to pay for it.
Yeah, that's it.
Personally, I would assume go ahead and pay for it one time.
The only question is I have, is do we have to amend the budget if we buy it outright?
Maybe it's the, the general.
Okay. I think, I, yeah, I think the same.
One more question I have before we do that thing. If we lease it, how long do we lease 13 months? Oh, in a year, we're probably not going to have a trade program or anything like that for new better stuff, so.
So, but keep them in a story, three or five.
That was the motion, Lee, you want? Two.
Yes, sir. To approve that, $10,829.57?
I'll second the motion.
Now, with Jill, the second?
Yes.
Motion by Lynn, seconded by Bill, to get the new server for one payment of $10,829.57? Any further discussion? All in favor, say the same, aye.
Aye.
All votes, same sign? Motion passes. Item F, discussion in action to approve Grand Valley End Team Quote for new quote copy of lease, $330 per month, and the current one we have is 306, according to Peter, it's giving a lot of trouble and damage possibly, so I think it would definitely be money well spent.
They have stepped up and forgiven in the last six, seven months with guarantees, and have offered to put a new machine in there that's apparently designed to offset some of the issues of the current, that we have with current copy, so.
Would we be better off to buy it outright or lease it?
I wouldn't buy a copy here, but.
Okay.
I'm going to use summer.
$24 a month for another, I think money well spent. That's one hour or less than an hour of labor, screw around with wasted time, so.
And they come up and take care of the services.
Oh, do they? Oh, okay, I, okay.
And that's us, and that was the drill positive in the past that we talked about.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve that, changing that.
I'll second.
Tell James.
Yep.
Okay.
Motion by Lynn, seconded by Lisa, to approve the Grand Valley End Team Quote for quote of copy of $330 per month. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All papers simplified, the same night?
Aye.
All votes, same sign, motion passes. Seven third, we can go back to public hearings. Item A, number three, considered administrative review of lot line adjustment. T F L minor subdivision being re-plat of lot sixty-two and sixty-three Dragon Wash subdivision. Section two, township one north, range one oh two west, six P M, town range three, Rio Waco, County Colorado. Anybody have any comments? That was, uh, item A today on the public hearing for replat, Dragon Wash.
Was this just a lot more than two?
This is a lot consolidation. And Susanna is here representing the client.
Actually, for the next case, not the one, not the Dragon Wash one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was our Morgan Bell.
So, I'm just asking. Item A B, public hearing, you just consider the administrative review of lot line adjustments for Morgan Bell minor subdivision being replat of lot eight and eight A Anderson minor subdivision, section one, two, township one north, range one oh two west, at the six P M, town range three, Rio Waco, County Colorado.
And that one I can address. Just, I'm here representing both clients, the seller and the buyer. It started out, when the Andersons owned it, it was one large lot. And this is up between Crest and Middle Street. So the two lots actually, they're back to back and they extend from Crest to Middle. It started out as one lot. For some reason, they, the Andersons split it into two lots. My current clients, the Morgans, bought both lots. Now they've got it on the market. I've got a client, Nikki Bell, that's purchasing it from them. And Nikki wants both lots in order to get, be able to finance it as one. And it's much easier to finance on a home than it is just on a vacant lot. She needed to consolidate the two. Plus, and I did explain to her that if she ever wanted to do anything else with that lot, she would have to subdivide it again if she wanted to just sell off that lot. But she says that the only future use that she envisions for herself would be to put a garage on it, which she would need to consolidate the lots anyway. So both the Morgans and the Bells are in agreement to consolidate the two lots again. And so that's what they'd like to do.
Anybody have any question? Well, let's move over to the new business then. Item twelve, special action to approve the administrative review as recommended by the planning and zoning commission of lot line adjustment capital minor subdivision being replat of lot sixty-two, sixty-two and sixty-three Dragon Wash subdivision. Section two, township one north, range one oh two west, at the six P M, town range three, Rio Waco, County Colorado.
What means that motion?
Motion by Brad to approve.
I'll say.
Second by Elaine. Any further discussion? All papers simplified, the same night?
Aye.
All votes, same sign, motion passes. Twelve B, discussion and action to approve the administrative review as recommended by the planning and zoning commission to consider administrative review of lot line adjustment, Morgan Bell minor subdivision being replat of lot eight and eight A Anderson minor subdivision, section one and two, township one north, range one oh two west, at the six P M, town range three, Rio Waco, County Colorado.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
I have one, one request here. After the planning and zoning meeting, it was discovered there was an encroachment in the alley on the garage that was added to the, to the house that's on the property. And so, Rio Waco abstract is on behalf of our clients are working on an encroachment agreement, which really comprises about two by nine foot area of eighteen square feet. And it's been there a long time. We'd be willing to sign the agreement if the council concurs with that. But as a contingency to your motion, would you say that it's contingent upon this easement agreement, encroachment agreement being produced and signed up, but.
Okay, I'll.
That's Peter's stuff.
Yeah. Would you include that? I'll say it back here.
I'll say it.
Okay. A motion by Lisa is amended to Peter's information, and second by Brad. Any further discussion? All papers simplified, the same night?
Aye.
All votes, same sign, motion passes. Next, item thirteen, informational items, you guys can all read that.
We need to do the addition for the other resolution.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Then the resolution we have, then we add it to the agenda.
Oh, I did that, I do. Okay, resolution, that's rule three, okay? Two thousand thirteen dash zero three, the town range in Colorado, issued some special events permit by the range clearing town council as a local licensing authority. And do I have to read all that?
No, there's no time.
I need to address that. I have been doing the special permits, you know, especially the permits because it's a little less time-consuming and the legal rule says we can do that for our town and make our own decisions. That way I don't have to send forms to them, right? I don't have to charge twenty-five dollars to the people, the one they've been there for this date and twenty-five dollars for the people in, that way. And I don't have to send, spend bullshit either. And it is something that everyone has a choice to do. We just need to have a resolution on that.
Okay, so you simplify everything a bit deeper.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution two thousand fifteen.
Motion by Brad?
I'll second.
Second by Elaine, to approve resolution two thousand thirteen.
No, please, thank you.
Dash zero three, any further discussion? All papers simplified, the same night?
Aye.
All votes, same sign, motion passes. Informational items, and then you've got announcements. She's got it all read. Does anybody got anything else they would like to share or?
Town flowers are doing well in the greenhouse and gardens.
Yep. I would entertain a bunch of them. Me and your German. Thank you.